I will share my screen. I think if there is any because once I open my screen, I don't think I'll be able to see the actual screen of this okay, actual Google Meet screen. That's why if at all, if there is any any video issue or if there is any audio issue, let me know through your mic. Somebody can unmute your mic and you can just tell me that okay. So I will try to share my screen. So hope you are all able to see my screen. Okay, see there is one question given right in the in the quiz. That there is an instruction move. There is an instruction move something like A X comma some memory location was given right A X or B X something like that it is given okay. What is doing it is actually transferring the data from memory to X register. Right, see what this instruction does, this instruction is transferring data from the memory to the X register. Right, this is an example for indirect addressing mode, yes or no? Because your offset address is indirectly available in the B X register, okay. Now, in the question, what is asked is what is the address generated? Okay, to access the next data from the memory, to access the next data from the memory. See here, which is that address you are going to access for this instruction, it is given, what is that? See you have been given D S, D S content is given some two zero zero zero, right? And for example, B X which is your offset, offset address two one zero zero, right? Now, to get the data for this instruction, okay? Now, what is the address generated as usual, it is two zero 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 zero. Multiply this D S, okay, which is a segment address or some sections it has been told it has a base address, okay? It's actually a segment address, okay? So shift shifting four bit position to the left, similar to multiplying this by ten, both are same, okay? Then add this offset address. So what you get for this is two one zero zero zero. Right, so now this address is to get the data for this instruction. Now what is asked in the question? What is that address used, what is that address which is generated to to get the data for the next instruction? That's what is told in the question. Next instruction to this may be some some instruction where you need the data. Right, so now for this instruction, data is coming from two one zero zero. Now see automatically you can say that from two one zero zero zero, one word is actually copied, word is copied from the memory. Right, one word is copied from the memory, okay? Now when the word is copied from the memory, right, for this instruction, you know, this is the world copied, when the world is copied from the memory, you know, this offset address for the next data will be incremented by two, you know that your your memory is byte addressable. Your memory is byte addressable, so when it is memories byte addressable. And the question it is asked that you have to get from the next memory location. That means definitely it will be two one zero zero two, right? Next location is two one zero zero two. This is what the answer which is required, I have checked most of you have done mistakes that. Okay, the address generated to get the data is correct, but many people have done plus one. Many people have written instead of plus two, they have written zero zero one. How it is correct because you are transferring a word from the memory, right? When you transfer a word from the memory, memory is byte addressable, definitely it will it will make use of two memory location. The next data will come from the the next not the next one, next to next location. And I have seen most of you have done this mistake. And there was one question. You have been given number of address lines, eighteen lines you have given. And then it has been told it is a word addressable. What is the meaning of word addressable? That means each memory location can store sixteen bit of data. Right, he is sixteen bit of data, then definitely it will be two to the power of two to the power of eighteen, right? There are two to the power of eighteen locations. Right, now this multiplied by it is eight if it is byte addressable, this is what I did in the class. Multiplied by sixteen. Okay, this much a number of bits. The total memory capacity, yes or no? Right, there are two to the power of eighteen locations multiplied by number of bytes or number of bits or number of words. So you have been asked to do or get the result in bytes, so it is two bytes, sixteen bit means two bytes, you know it. So that much number of answer you get around five hundred and twelve kilobytes. See, it's very easy calculation, see all these things I have done in the class, I don't know, the paper was very, 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 very easy, very easy. It was not difficult at all, your quiz paper was very easy, every question was easy. You have been asked to list all the registers. You just could have written A X, B X, C X, D X, flag register, instruction pointer. Right, you know that at least you know this much things are there, if you have written all these things, you would have got full marks. And we have given risk and sisk. In risk and sisk, we have given same thing instead of multiplication, you just have to make it as add, that's all. It is the same result, right? See, this is the things, every, every important things you need to remember, right? Don't do this mistake again and again, okay? So now we will actually in this class, we will try to learn a program. Okay, how to write the program, see many, I have seen many, many of you cannot write a program independently. Right, how to write a program independently, okay? So in this session, what I will do is I will try to execute and write a program, I will tell you how to start with given a question. Right, okay? So you you also have to, you know, write it yourself. Okay, so I I have told you for many students how to use this tool, how to use this tool, okay? That is a tool called M. Right, so M O tool is very good, so you can use that M O tool, okay? See here, this M O tool which I have actually given you. Right, I have I have shared the the code also, right? See, this is a old emulation software which is presently not supported by that company which 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 has been which have developed this, okay? So, but but it is available free and same time it has it will ask for a key. And and some keys are available online, I think I have also shared it with you. Okay, students, okay? So anything, any doubts, anything you want to ask, feel free to ask, this is just interaction session with you all. If you have any doubt, okay, you can you can just okay, ask me. Right, okay? And this I said this, this, this session, I am just giving you as a as a as a special session. This attendance is not going to count for anywhere, okay? But I want you to give more inputs, more practice on programming, that is what this session is. Okay? Any doubts, anything is there, you can ask now, okay? Otherwise, I will go ahead with the programming practice. I have shared that video solving the programs of a tutorial sheet. Watch that video, I am not going to take it again, if possible, I will take it in the class, otherwise you you please watch that video for the for the programming practice, but same time I want to deal, I want to do this, you know, this practice, programming practice on the stretch. Okay, now let us write a program, let us write a simple program, listen carefully. To take a string from the keyboard. Okay, to take a string from the keyboard. And, okay, and then find the number of vowels. Find number of vowels in that string. The question is very clear, I will write the question. The question is enter a string from the keyboard. Okay, and then count number of vowels. Right, this is what you are supposed to do, you may get any program for this, this type of programs makeup, okay? So sorting an array. You have already done it in the lab. Yes or no? I don't know whether you have done it yourself or you have copied from somewhere, I don't know, but some of you have done in the lab, which is a assignment question. Okay, so but I don't know how many of you really know to write it independently. Right? Now let us write a program for this, see. Concentrate here first, okay, very important. So this session if you are doing some activity along with this, related to this, you will understand. Otherwise, you will definitely don't understand, but don't waste your time doing something else, concentrate on any one thing. Okay, let us start writing the program, how do you write the program? See all these things, initial thing, what is that dot model small, all these are actually by hearting. Okay, stack twenty, what is the stack twenty does? And sometimes the stack twenty is not required unless you use a stack. Right, dot model small is required, but stack twenty it will deserve a twenty stack. It will automatically declare a stack, stack operation will, I will take it in the class on Monday or Tuesday next week. Stack operation, I think computer science or some of you already done stack operation, there is a push operation, right? Pop operation and there is last in first out, first in last out, that is called a stack operation, okay? So you are actually doing it so that you you reserve of a twenty space for a stack operation, okay? So unless you use, this is not required, okay, anyway, you put it as a practice. Now, in this program, what are you doing? You are going to enter a string from the keyboard. So when you are going to enter a string from the keyboard, you use your keyboard, computer keyboard to enter the string. You press the keys, respective keys of that character which makes a string. Okay, but where it will store, once you enter from the keyboard, where it will store? It has to be stored in the memory, right? It has to be stored in the memory, it won't go directly into the microprocessor registers. That memory space you have to declare in the data part. Right, now I will declare it as a variable. I will declare it as string one. See, there is a special type of declaration we have to give, whenever you take a string from the keyboard. So first value in that string declaration is what is the maximum character which you can enter. Okay, what is the maximum character of the string which you can enter? That is, I will take it as some eighty, eighteen decimal reason, you remember properly eighty, if I don't put any H here, that means when it goes to the memory, when the when, when, when microprocessor takes it to its memory, it is considered as its equivalent hexadecimal. So that means eight zero here is a decimal eighty, when it is stored in the memory, it is taken as five zero, it is equivalent hexadecimal. Next location in the same string. In same string one, next location, you're now your offset is string one, your offset address is nothing but string one. So next offset address will be another byte with a question mark. What is this question mark in this location? As soon as you enter the string from the keyboard, you may not enter eighty, but you may sometimes you you might have been entered ten. That number ten, that the number of characters which you enter for the string, that ten will come and store in this next location. Point and after this location, right? After this location, you will have that the entire whatever maximum character you can enter, you are going to reserve that much space just by filling it zero. This is the way you have to declare a string only when you are taking a string input from the keyboard, remember this, this is compulsory to use. And I told you, what is that first one eight zero, what is the question mark? Question mark means it is in that location, actual string, actual number of characters in the string which you entered from the keyboard, see you are actually telling eighty is the maximum, but sometimes you will enter only ten character in the string, then press enter, right? Then number of characters in the string will be only ten, decimal ten, okay, right? So after that value ten in 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 the next consecutive locations, your actual string comment, stick here, I will, I will demonstrate this now. Okay, fine. Okay, so now assuming that what I am going to do first is just taking a string from the keyboard. So dot code, next will be dot code. See, writing this dot code start, okay? Now definitely it requires move A X comma at data, okay, then move D S comma A X. All these things normally you people will buy hard it and the examination, if you write that, you will not get marks. You not get marks means only for that, only that you have written, you not get marks. Somebody will write only this model, dot model small, dot stack, dot data, dot code start, end start and remaining all the main core of the code is if it is not correct, you will not get. The main marks will be given for that the program, the main program which you have written. I have understood this, okay? So now, now what you do is you will, you will have to take the string from the keyboard, let us write part by part, let us write the program part by part. Okay, now to to take the string from the keyboard, first you have to load the effective address of string one into the D X register, this is compulsory. This is compulsory. Load the effective address of string one into the D X register. Right, okay, this is very important to do. Now you have to load the see a function. Load the function of the interrupt of the DOS interrupt. You know that to take a string from a keyboard or to enter a string from the keyboard, definitely you will have to make use of interrupt twenty one, that is DOS interrupt. And interrupt twenty one will work for different activities or different purposes by different functions. And how do you differentiate those functions? By putting that function value into the A H register. Like if you put zero two into H register, then call interrupt twenty one will display the character. Right, all those things, so now to take the, to take the string from the keyboard, you will have to put A zero A H, this is very important, zero A H into H register. Then call, then call interrupt twenty one. Okay, now in this program to halt, what we will do, we will use DOS interrupt only to hold to do halt function or to end the execution, the function number or function which which DOS interrupt, interrupt twenty one makes use of is four C H, if you put four C hexadecimal value into H register, then call interrupt twenty one, okay? This will actually make a halt, this is similar to that interrupt three, okay, similar to the interrupt three, okay? Is it fine, everything is fine? Now as usual, code ends and start. I I have not put the codes corresponding to the oil, I will tell you that step by step. Right, so this program is only to take a string from a keyboard and store it in a memory and I will show you that how it is stored in the memory. Okay, so if you are using M O eighty eight zero eight six, it is very easy, save it first. Okay, save it first. You can save it anywhere. Turning little slow because of the bandwidth. Okay, now I will save it as my regular file name jag ten. You can save it in any folder, it is saved now. Compile, see there is a compile button, you can see my cursor, right? You can see my cursor, compile. See, if there is no error, directly it will ask you a file name for the E X C file because you are generating E X C file. Even in Turbo assembler, you have generated an E X C file, right? Okay, so I will give the same file name, I will not run the code now. Okay, so what I will do, I will just try to emulate it step by step, I will do step by step operation, okay? Now just press on emulate. Press on emulate, see emulator will open, see what is this emulator? The emulator is this, this is something similar to that, you know, the turbo debugger you are actually, you have, you have used in your lab. And can you see original source code, this is the original source code, okay? This yellow line will actually move according to the single step operation you do, whenever you press single step operation, this yellow will move indicates that this particular yellow line is executed. See now suppose if I press single step here now, see here, listen, if I press single step here, that means at this moment, this particular instruction is getting executed, what is that? Move A X comma at data, now you see what is going into the X register? In this instruction, I told you that the base address or segment address, segment address is going into the X register. You all know that segment address where your data is stored has to be loaded into the D S register of the microprocessor before you do anything in microprocessor. Understood this. Okay, so that's what you are doing here, see now if I press this, see, can you see what is going to X register? Can you see what is what has gone to X register, can you see my cursor here? Can you see my cursor here? What is there in A X register zero seven one two, that is the segmented us. Now see, you are going to put it in a data segment register of the microprocessor, see now can you see data segment register is loaded? Now in this data segment part, you have your data, you have your data. Now can you check, can you check this, it is possible to check, what to do, go to view here, okay? And click on the memory, click on the memory, so when you click on the memory, it will show the, it will show the data, memory data, see this is the memory data. This will show the memory data. Now when you load, it will show some random, so it is showing the data, the memory data with the segment address zero seven one two and from the offset address zero 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 five. It is loading some random value. Now what is that segment address which we need now? The segment address which we need is zero seven one two, so you update this, so now what you do, go here. You you make it as zero seven one two. Now if you want, you can make it zero 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 zero. Update this. Update this. Okay, now can you see here? Now let it, let this be here like this, okay, now I will show you how your data declaration is saved in this memory. Okay, listen carefully, listen carefully here, I will tell you, I will explain in this, okay, listen carefully here, see here. See here. You have declared string one D B eight zero, then D B question mark and D B eighty D U P zero, you know, you know about this, okay? Now how this is stored in a memory? And you know this is stored in the data segment and that segment address is known, you are already loaded here, you are already loaded here. And offset address it chosen is zero 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 zero, the offset address it chosen here is zero 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 zero, right? See here. I will just show you that, see when you see load effective address D X string one. If you see in turbo debugger, this string one will be replaced by its equivalent offset address. Now here offset address is zero 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 zero. That means the offset address of string one is zero 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 zero. Right, so in that case, the first location of string one should have eight zero, yes or no? Right, and what it will have, it will have its corresponding hexadecimal value, can you see here? Can you see here five zero, which is the hexadecimal equivalent of eight zero, see? And next location is zero because question mark zero, next location is zero. And after that, some eighty locations, eighty decimal locations with all zero, can you see here entire eighty locations you have zero, can you see here everywhere you have zero till here? Now I will execute remaining instructions. I told you that next location should be loaded with the actual number of characters you have entered from the keyboard. Okay, which I will demonstrate now and after that location, you will have the actual characters of the strings you have entered from the keyboard, listen carefully. Listen carefully, okay, so what I will do now, I will execute this, see here, I will execute this. Load effective address DX comma string one is executed, can you see what is that in DX register? Zero 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 zero, that means the the offset address of string one is zero 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 zero. That is selected automatically by this assembler. Even in Turbo debugger also, you have seen that the offset address is selected by the assembler itself. Even though you are going to put in org and something like that. Okay? Is everything is fine? Now I will execute the interrupt, see here, I will do single step, try to do single step. What is going into AH register is zero A, see? Then now see, you are executing interrupt twenty one now. Now see what happens when you execute interrupt twenty one, see, this console will open, this is called console. You can see the same black screen in TSM also. Fine, now you see, I will enter the string now, I will enter the string, I will enter string as. Ramadan. Kareem, okay, I will enter the string as Ramadan Kareem. Now can you count how many characters are there? How many characters are there, I have not pressed enter so far, I just typed the characters of the string. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen characters are there, yes or no? Right, count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirty. That means in this location, see my cursor, in this location. It should be updated with the thirteen, what is the thirteen? Thirteen, I am talking about decimal, dear students. What should go and sit there? See right? Yes or no? C or D? D, thirteen is D right, fourteen is E, fifteen is F. So moment I press enter, this location next to this five zero. Which is hexadecimal of eight zero, which you have declared as the maximum characters you can enter. The next location is the number of counts of the characters in a string. And after that, all consecutive locations will have the ASCII value of this R A Y M A D A L. Which you can observe now. Now concentrate on this memory part, okay, so moment I press enter. You will get zero D, zero C here, right? Zero D here and then you get ASCII value corresponding to R here, A here and all. Can you see, just see, have an observation here, okay, see here, can you see here? Can you see, zero D has come here? And then from this location onwards, Ramadan Kareem, see seventy two is the ASCII value for R. Sixty one is the ASCII value for A, small A, and from here till here sixty, six zero D, see till here. Ramadan Kareem. And after that zero D comes because why zero D comes means, okay, I have pressed enter key. Right, after entering Ramadan Kareem, I have pressed enter key. That means the ASCII value corresponding to that enter key is zero D, that's why zero D is coming here. Right, okay, so in this way. A string can be taken from the keyboard. And it is stored in the memory like this in the variable string one in this particular program.
Sir, can you tell again why is there zero D at last?
See, after entering Ramadan Kareem. Right, I I will press enter right, to I will press enter key. Right, so that enter key is also taken as one ASCII value by the microprocessor. I have understood this, see I will, I will, I will you, I will put, I will press R key, right? I'll then I'll press A, then I'll press Yum key, key in the keyboard, then I'll press T in the keyboard like that. After the last character Yum in this, after that I'll press enter to finish my uh string. That enter key is also taken as one ASCII value, one one character by the microprocessor. The ASCII value corresponding to that enter key is this zero D. That's why zero D has come here. Have you understood this?
Yes sir, understood.
So now your data is, your string is in the memory now. Our next work is to get it from the memory and one by one we check whether that particular character is oval or not. If it is oval, we will try to keep a counter and we will increment that counter, otherwise we will not increment the count. So like that, we check each and every character of this memory, okay? And then we will, we will, we will update the count to get the number of vowels in this particular. Sentence, uh in this particular string. Let us continue our program, if you understood taking an input from the keyboard, okay? So how do you display the same string? On the console, how do you display same string on the console? Can somebody tell me which is that, which is that uh function of DOS interrupt? Which will convert that into uh which will actually uh display a string. Which one is that, can somebody tell me that? See now I can just, moment interrupt twenty one H is executed, it will end. See program has returned control to the operating system, see that means it's got end. Terminated, see. Now tell me which is that? Now I want to display same string on the console, now now actually I have taken from the keyboard, how do you display the same string on the console? Which program I can write, tell me? Can somebody tell me now? Come on. You have seen in the memory from where the string is started storing. Can somebody tell me some, 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 some code instruction now?
So should we use a procedure?
Why you want procedure man? You can directly, see already your string is there in the memory, right? Already your string is there in the memory, right? So how do you?
L E A, L E S DX comma string.
L E A DX comma?
S T R.
S T R, I want to use the same string, whatever I have entered from the keyboard.
So S T R one plus two?
Exactly, it is not S T R one, it is S T R plus, one plus two, why S T R one, one plus two? Because your string is stored from the third location of S T R one, right? I have demonstrated you now. First of, the first data byte of S T R one is the maximum length. Which you have put, that is eight zero, that is five zero in hexadecimal. Next location will have the actual length of the character which you entered from the keyboard. And after that onwards, your actual string will start. The offset address of the actual string which you entered Ramadan Kareem, which you entered now, is string one plus two, have you understood this? I have, I have demonstrated you now, just now. Right, I have demonstrated you just now. Fine, just now I demonstrated you. Right, okay, now what next, tell me? What next, move? Come on, what is that function which is used to display a string? See I want to make it interactive, otherwise no use at all, I will not take such any classes. I will make a video and I will float it to you, watch or don't watch, not bother. Right? Move. I want to display, display string, displaying string, you have done this in the lab. String displayed in DOS interrupt, what is that H you have to put?
H comma zero A H.
Zero H for taking from the keyboard now, I have already done it, right? Now I said you have to display. Which is that function?
Zero nine H.
Zero nine H. Zero nine H, after that just call interrupt twenty one H, that's all. Now let us see what this will do. Right, I am just entering it and I am trying to display it. Okay, now listen carefully what is happening here. I will compile this. Now I will just try to emulate this. I will use the memory, see now you see where it is storing the memory. I will try to execute, one, two, now my memory I have to update with whatever segment register. What is the segment register now, zero seven, one, two. Update, see can you see that string one, the offset address of string one? Right, see you here you have L E A DX string one, the corresponding instruction is actually, you know. That you are moving this zero 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 H to DX register. That means the offset address is zero 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 H. See now in this segment, offset address zero zero zero, you have five zero, which is the hexadecimal equivalent of eighty, eight zero, eighty. Now next location, as soon as you enter the string from the keyboard, the actual length of the string which you entered will come. And and then string plus two, this is string, this is string plus one, this is string plus two, from here onwards only your string will come. Now I will execute this. I will go to the, I told you, okay, now I will enter something uh different, okay? I will enter bits. Pilani, Dubai. Now now, now tell me how many characters are there, can somebody count? Make it interactive, see you try to learn, this session is to learn. Can you tell me how many characters are there in this? Hope you are able to see the screen, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen means uh how many? In this, in in hexadecimal?
F.
What is that something to be stored in the next location of this?
F sir.
Zero F, right, after that, this bits Pilani, the corresponding ASCII value will be stored. Now I will press enter, see, now I will press enter, okay, see, can you see here? Zero F has come, hope you are able to see. If you are seeing through mobile phone, I don't think you will be doing any justice for this. Zero F, see zero F fifteen, and sixty two is the ASCII value of B. Sixty nine is ASCII value of I, so from string plus two onwards, string plus two onwards. Can I see here, string plus two onwards, your actual string will be stored, see here. B I T S, last character will be zero D, I said the entire. Okay, so I will keep this as it is now, I will go, I will go ahead. Okay, I will go ahead, now next instruction will be displaying, I want to display same string. So what I did, I have loaded in DX register string one plus two. Then I called a function zero nine H, see now what will happen? Okay, see here, there is something is actually very important here, it is giving one message. It's saying that if you want to display any string. The exact string what you entered. You have to end the string with a dollar sign, you have to end the string with the dollar sign, it's very important. See, you have given a maximum number of characters you can enter in the string is eight zero, right? Eight zero, but you have entered only fifteen characters and then you have ended the entire string. Understood this, but still remaining are empty. That's why. If you want to display only that string which you entered from the keyboard, always you have to end it with a dollar sign. That means. When the microprocessor displays a string from the memory using the function zero nine H and DOS interrupt. It will look for the dollar sign, moment it gets a dollar sign, it won't print anything after the dollar sign. Okay? That's why having that dollar sign is very important whenever you try to. Enter a string and whenever you try to display the string. That's why, now what we will do, we will try to. Execute this program again. Okay, I will reload this. I will reload this again. I will, you can reload the same program, now execute again. Single step. Now as usual, take a, I will take bits Pilani. Dubai, I will press enter, okay? So then I will go on a single step. But still, did I enter? Dollar sign, no, I didn't enter dollar sign, once again, I will reload it. I'll again. Bits, Pilani, Dubai, now I will enter a dollar sign here, see, okay? Enter. Okay? Now dollar sign has come. Now I will continue executing this. Ah now I will try to display the string, see. Now it is displayed, can you see it's displayed? Bits Pilani Dubai, can you see here, it is displayed here? The string. Bits Pilani Dubai is displayed here, can you see here? And this display happened, see only bits Pilani Dubai only displayed here, dollar has not come. It will try to display the characters, the character rate till the dollar sign. See, this is, this is the display program, this display program. Okay? Now try to end the program. Fine, so now we will try to continue. Now our purpose is not only entering the string from the keyboard and displaying it, we will keep it as it is. I will try to enter something in here, right? Now. I have to. Check each and every. Characters in the string, whether it is a. It is a oval or not. I have to check each and every characters in the string. All the string is stored in the memory, it is stored in string one, once you have taken from the keyboard. Now you have to get. Character by character and compare it with the oval. Comparing it to oval means you have to compare it with the A E I O U, right? A E I O U, yes or no? Right, so you have to compare it with all these things. Check that particular character is matching with this, if it doesn't match, don't increment that oval count. Right, don't increment that oval count. So now what I will do, I will keep a counter for the oval count. You can even have a memory declaration also. So I will just here, I will just move BL comma zero zero, this is going to be oval, oval count. Initially I will make it as a zero zero, I am going to increment this counter whenever. Microprocessor comes across an oval. Now. Come down, come down. Now how many times it has to check, how many characters it has to check? It should keep on checking all the characters, right? So how many characters, the number of characters which you entered, right? So which is that, which is that memory location you get, the number of characters you entered from the keyboard, now tell me? That is going to be your count, string plus one, right? String plus one, so what you do here is. Move that much loop you have to do, right? Move CX comma string plus one. Move CX comma string plus one. Now, see you cannot do CX here, why you cannot do CX here, tell me? You may get error in this. Why you get error in this, tell me? Can somebody tell me, you may get error in this? Why you get error in this?
So, because it may exceed length.
What is that exceed length, tell me? You can put it in a very clear way. This type of question, see in this.
We have eighty.
You have?
So, the size of this.
Exactly, yeah. String is actually byte, right? Byte.
Yes.
But CX is actually a word. You are trying to send a byte to the world, this will, that will be mismatch here. That's why you make it as CL. I understood this, CL. You can use that decrement CL and you can use jump on no zero, that can be used as a loop. That is for the looping operation. Now, it is done. Okay, now what you do? Now, you have to take the data, right? You have to take the C, your, your string is already available in the character array. A continuous array. Now, you have to use its offset address to get the character one by one. So, you have to load the offset address into one index register, one index, an index register. Put the offset address in index register. Now, use that index register to, to get, using indirect addressing mode, to get the character from the memory. So, for that, what you do? Load effective address into SI register, okay? Now, what you should do? String one plus two, right? You have to do string one plus two, right? So, what you do in here, you are going to take the offset address of the character which you entered from the keyboard, which is going to start from string plus two location onwards. You are going to put it in SI register. So, SI register is having the first character which you entered. So, now what you do with the first character, now tell me? What you do with the first character? You move it to the, you can do like this, you can move it to the AL register if you want. Let it be in the AL register. Okay, let it be in the AL register. Then, compare your AL register first with the, let assume that you are going to put only, you are going to use only small letters. Assume that string you are going to enter is only small letter. Now, compare that with the small. Right? Now, listen carefully, now listen carefully here. Now, this compare instruction will affect your flag registers. So, when you say that this content of AL is equal to A, only when it is vowel, right? Only when first character is vowel, your zero flag will become zero. Otherwise, your zero flag will not become zero. Sorry, zero flag will not become one. See, you already know about this compare instruction, right? Compare instruction, what it does, it subtracts AL and ASCII value of, content of AL and ASCII value of A. If it is zero, then your zero flag will be one. It will set the zero flag. Now, depending on the setting of zero flag or non-setting of zero flag, you can increment the count. Right? Or not increment the count, or check for the next vowel, make check for the next vowel. See if jump on, I will put jump on no zero, what you should do if the result is not zero? Right? You, you, you have taken the first character here, first character to AL register. You have taken the first character which you have entered from the keyboard into AL register and you are comparing it to the first vowel here. If the result is not zero, what is the meaning of that? It is not a vowel, right? It is not a vowel. If it is not a vowel, then you should check. Okay? You jump, you jump to a label where you will check again for another vowel. So, what I should do, what I should do in down one? In down one, okay? You should check once again, compare same value in AL with the with the E, with the E. Yes or no? With the E. Right? Now, if it is zero, what you should do here? If it is not zero, it will down, it will come here. It will go down and come here. Okay, now what I should do if it is, if it is zero?
Increment BL.
Increment, very good, increment BL. Now, there is one more statement is going to come here, we will see it later, we will see it. Okay? Now, assume that it is compared with A, it is not found comparison. It is not successful, that means your zero flag is not set. Then, it will go to jump on no zero, go to down one. So, down one again, it will compare for E. Now, once again, you have to jump on no zero. So, if it is not even E, if the character is not even E, then once again, it has to compare for the next vowel, right? So, I will make down two. So, in down two, what I should do? In down two, what I should do? Once again, I will compare with the next vowel, right? I will compare with the small V. And here, if it is matching with E, what I should do? Tell me? Increment BL, right? If it is matched with E, do increment BL for matching with E. Now, once again here, jump on no zero, down three, down three. Increment BL. Now, what should happen in down three? What should happen in down three? Come on.
Compare with. Compare I.
Compare with the compare with the
I.
Compare AL with the I, see this is the way it goes, compare AL with the I. Once again, jump on no zero, down four. If it compared successfully, increment BL. Okay, now next, down four, what you should do? Down four, what you should do, tell me? Once again, compare with the how many are over now?
U's.
U, okay? Compare with the U. Compare with the U. Now, okay? Jump on no zero, down five. Okay? Increment BL. Okay, now, can you tell me? If it is not matched with any of this, what should this down, last, it will come to down five, right? After that, I don't have any other vowel, right? Yes or no? Come on. I don't tell anything. So, in down five, it is, it is failed to say that this is not vowel. So, now, you should try with the next character, right? In the array, right? You should try with the next character in the array. So, how do you go to the next character in the array? Because your, your array is indexed by SI register here. Your array is indexed by SI register. Currently, it is actually indexed by SI register. Now, SI content is the first offset address. So, how do you get the next character? I just have to increment the SI, yes or no? Yes or no? I just have to increment SI, then I have to start again comparing A, E, I, O, U, yes or no? I have to do the looping, right? Now, what I should do, how many times I will loop it? As the number of characters. So, what I will do, number of characters is already there in the CL register. I have loaded it into CL register. So, now what I will do to do the looping here, what I do is decrement CL, yes or no? Decrement CL and then jump on no zero up. Yes or no? Right, whenever CL becomes zero, only that means you have compared all the characters for vowels. So, until CL becomes zero, it will try to get the vowels. Now, jump on no zero up, so where your up should come, tell me now? Your up should come here. Once again, take that next character and put it in, put it in the AL register and do the comparison. Again, do the comparison. Right? Okay, now, your program is almost done, but see here, every iteration, whenever it compares a character pointed by SI for all this, when it is actually found, it is a vowel, what it will do, see in this case, in this case, if it is not a vowel, okay? This is satisfied, it will go to jump, it will go to down two and it will compare for V. Suppose if it is, the result is zero, when you compare AL and E, suppose the content of AL is actually a vowel E only. So, it is found that it is a vowel, it will do increment BL, it will come here. It won't go to down two, it won't go down two. See, after incrementing BL, do you need to, once again, check it for other character? Tell me? It is done, right? Do you need to do that?
No.
Understanding? So, what statement I should give here? It should go to the next character, right? After incrementing BL, once it found it as a vowel, it will definitely increment BL, it won't execute, this is not satisfied, it won't, it won't go to down two. That means it will increment the BL. After that, if you don't give any statement here, once again, it will compare with V. Then, again compare with I, do you want to do that? Not required, right? Do you require it? No. So, instead of that, what you can do, I will give a statement jump where it should come actually, it should come to down five, right? Simply, it has to increment the SI and then start checking the next character. That's why, what you do is, after this increment BL, you put down five U. Here also, you put here also, okay? Yeah, here also, you put jump, have you, have you understood why I am putting down five U here? Have you understood this? So, after increment, I am putting jump down five. Why I am putting jump down five U here? Can somebody tell me? So that, once it is matched, anyway, count is incremented, why you should simply waste time comparing with other vowels? That's why, jump to down five, then simply increment this and continue. Okay, so here I will execute jump. Here, jump not required because anyway, it is coming to the next statement only. But still, you can put it, it is not a problem. That's not a problem, even if you put, that's not a problem. Now, tell me, after it completes the loop, moment your CL becomes zero, right, it will come here, it will come out this jump on no zero up statement. Now, where will be your count is? Vowel count is, where will be your vowel count?
BL register.
Tell me? It is in the BL register, right? So, what I will do? To put that in the memory, I will just take one memory location, DB question mark, I will put it in the memory, okay? I will put it in the memory. Now, listen carefully here. After this, you just move that, okay? Value of BL to the memory. Done. Program for counting number of vowels in a string which is entered from the keyboard is done, is done, is done. This is the program. I have explained it step by step now. So, what, what next, whatever is required next is already here. Okay, right? So, instead of, see now, what I will do, I will try to display that value on the console, I will write a program for that also. Suppose, assume that I don't want this. I don't want to display the string, but I want to display, I want to display the number of vowel counts on the console itself. On the console itself. Okay, so how do you, how, how, how do you display that? You already done the display program. You have to display the content of BL register, yes or no? How do you, the content of BL register?
So, can we show V count instead?
No, you want, if you want to show V count, you have to write a display program, right? Hmm?
Yes, sir, we do.
V count is having a byte. It is having a byte. Suppose if your string is having eight vowels, okay? It is having a value eight there. How do you display that eight? You have to display zero eight on the console, right? How do you display zero eight on the console? Or eight on the console?
We have to move it to DX register and then.
Once again, listen carefully, this is the mistake you are doing. V count is not a character, V count is a byte. Listen carefully. If you put in the DX register, it will put, it will just display, okay? The corresponding, you know, character for ASCII value eight. Have you understood this? Now, you have to convert that eight, whatever value is available in the BL register into its corresponding ASCII value. Now, can you tell me what is the ASCII value for eight? Thirty eight, right? Yes or no? ASCII value for eight is thirty eight. You put that in the DL register and then you use DOS interrupt zero two, interrupt twenty one zero two as a function, then call interrupt twenty one, it will display that content, yes or no? Come on. That is what you have to do, you have done this in the lab. See, now your value, what is available in the V count or in the BL register is that value, hexadecimal value. The number of counts. Now, if you want to display that value on the console, you have to display its corresponding ASCII value. So, how do you display it? See, for example, assume that you got zero eight. Right? Now, if you want to display this, see zero eight is displayed, that is the value, hexadecimal value. If you load that address into DX register and if you try to call interrupt, string interrupt, it will print junk values, that's wrong, that's not correct. So, you have to, you have to display this eight. For that, you have to use this move move DL comma ASCII value of eight, what is ASCII value of eight? ASCII value of eight is thirty eight. You have done this in the lab. Ask it to hexadecimal conversion. Hexadecimal to ASCII conversion, you have done this in the lab. What you are doing in the lab, I don't know. At least you practice in the home. So, thirty eight H. Okay? Then what happens? Then, move AH comma zero two to display a character. Now, you are displaying character, interrupt twenty one H, that's all. Right? This is what you have to do. This is what you have already done in the lab without understanding anything. So, if you want to display this number of characters, what you do? What I will do is, see, assume that you do some assumption now, assume that I am going to enter a small string and I am going to have the number of vowels less than nine, not more than nine. Right? So that I can generate that ASCII value from zero to nine by just adding thirty to that. So that I can generate the character. So, what I will do is, I will add BL, okay? Comma thirty, so that I can generate its corresponding ASCII value, thirty H. Okay? Okay, then I will move that into DL register. Here BL, now I will do move AH comma zero two. Then interrupt twenty-one H, now this will display. Now, what assumption I have done is. My number of vowels lies within zero to nine. And I have a small, small sentence. Okay, so now it will display the number of vowels on the console. Anyway, memory it will go, there is no doubt about it. Okay, it will be there in the memory. Why it will be in the, there in the memory? Because you are using this instruction. Because of this instruction, that is move V count BL, it is there in the memory. Right, but if you want to print it on the console, you have to convert it into the corresponding ASCII value. And then use, put it in the DL register and use the function zero two, okay, for interrupt twenty-one H. That's all. Right? So shall we run this program now? Okay, now save this program, compile, there may be some error, right?
Sir.
Hmm.
Uh here the line number twelve, uh like the move CL comma STR one, isn't that supposed to be after we given the data?
Exactly, exactly, you know that, that will automatically come, see. Once you.
But then.
Ah.
But then initially it will be zero.
You are perfectly right, you are perfectly right, that's why it's giving error here, right? Oh, without entering the data, how it can come? Exactly, correct, very good, very good. So I will just put it here, it should be supposed to be here, very good, very good. It should be here. Because once you enter data only, that will be there, right? Okay, very good, very good, it should come here because you are, you are entering the data here, correct? Right? Okay, let's take that was the error we had. Now it says wrong parameters move CL comma string one, let us check why it is. Still giving.
So that STR one, just one.
STR one, exactly, yes, correct. Now let us see, compile. Yes, no error now, okay? Okay, save. Now close. Now I will just try to emulate this program. Let us check, it will give proper value. Okay, I will also load the memory, see, memory. I'll also load the memory and I will try to do a single step. Now see here, now memory is showing some random value here, but what we need is. The data segment of zero seven one two, so I will update here zero seven one two, zero seven one two. Update here. Okay, I got the same thing, see fifty here and then, okay. Now I will just go single step. I will, I will enter a small uh okay, value, okay? Not a big value, I will enter a small value. I will enter B I T S. Uh. P I. Y. You, okay? Understood this? How many vowels are there in this? Come on. How many vowels are there?
Four.
Four vowels, right? Okay, now I will press enter, see here, as soon as I enter, the length of the. Uh string and also the string will come in the memory, see it has come to memory now, see.
Yes, sir, what about the dollar sign?
Ah no, I am not going to display a string, right? That's why I have not put the dollar.
Okay, yes.
I have removed that, dollar you have to put only if you want to display the entire string using zero nine H.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, dollar is not required because now my aim is to only count number of vowels. I am not going to display this again, right? I have understood this now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, now let us, I will go ahead with the. Okay, now I will go down. CL is, has to be loaded with the number of characters, it is loaded, right? Loaded, right, see here. Now, next step, the first character. The address has to be loaded to S I register, which is the, which is the offset address of the place where your string started. Here, right, sixty-two, right? Yes or no? What is string plus two? This is string. String plus one, see, see the cursor, string plus two, so sixty-two should be uh that offset address of this has to be loaded into the. See, S I register, can you see here? S I register is loaded with zero 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 two, can I see? This is, this is zero 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 zero, this is zero 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 one, this is zero 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 two. See, now S I is actually pointing to this. Now see, sixty-two, sixty-two should be loaded to AL register. Next step, yes or no? Right? For the next step, sixty-two should be loaded to AL register, can you see sixty-two is loading to AL register? Now it has to compare. Okay, now after comparing with A, where it should go? Tell me. The character you entered is actually A, uh is B, right? It should not satisfy this, right? See what is happening here? Now, jump on no zero, whether carry flag is set? No, right? So can you see the flag registers here? See, you can see the flag register also here, see, I'll put a flag register also. Whether flag register is set? No, right? Why flag, flag register is not one? Tell me. Come on, because it is not A, right? Okay, it will just check for E now. That also is not satisfied. Okay, it will. It will not check that also, now it will go to down for you directly. What, what will happen in down five? It will point to the.
Next.
Right, okay. So. It has come to down five now, decrement S I. Uh increment S I, decrement CL, then jump on no zero up, it will come again here. Now what is S I pointing to now, tell me, see here, next character, right? What is the next character? Come on. Next character is? What is the next character entered, come on? I, right?
I, yeah.
Okay, so you can see that. Sixty-nine. Is actually loaded to AL register, now it won't get compared with A, it will go down. Then it is not E, it will go down. It is not W, it is go down, but now you see. Okay, now you see. Here it will compare, it is compiled with the I. Now it will increment BL, it has to increment BL, see here, see it has come to BL now, why it has come to BL? Because it is compared with the AI, it is successful, so now you see increment BL. Done. One it got, okay? Now down for you. Go for the next character to check, increment yes I, decrement CL. Now check the next character. Like this, how many times it has to do until your CL, CL becomes zero and until this becomes zero? So now I will just go ahead with a single step. Okay? Until I will just go for single step until it becomes. Here. Until CL becomes zero, I will just go ahead. Of course, when you run this type of program, you have to completely run the program directly, okay? Because single step will take lot of time. Now I will do it until become CL becomes. Now what is the BL register is now? Three, right? So I will see when I come to display program. What is CL now, okay? Now CL has become zero, right? Okay, it won't go up now. Will it go up? No. It will come to the next. Now see here. The content of BL register is four now, see, you got a four count four, the four vowels in this. Now I will go single step again, it will go to store in the V count, see, V count will come. After that eighty characters reservation, four has come here. Now. Display, listen carefully, now display, see here. Okay, I have, I have added thirty-two BL, so thirty-nine is the actually thirty uh. BL will be thirty-four now, thirty-four is the ASCII value of four. So I am going to put it in the BL, uh DL register and I am using zero two. Now see, now it has to print. Okay, zero four on the console, but it may print just after the character you entered. Because you are not giving a new line character or second line uh charact- character to display. That's why it has to display. That the interrupt twenty-one, see it is displaying four, can you see here? It is displaying four, four count here. If you want this four to go down to the next line. You have to print, you have to print new line character, same thing, you have to actually uh print new line character. And also carriage return. Okay? Right? New line character and carriage return, that is uh you have to put uh zero D and zero A. One zero D and one zero A into the. Uh A, A, A DL register and call the interrupt twenty-one H by putting zero two to the H register. I will display that actually if you want, okay? Fine. So. Done, your program is done, see. Now end. Right, okay, so you have displayed that also, now I will tell you how to take that to the uh next character. Okay, how to uh display that zero two to the? Next one? So have you understood this now? The time? Now I will tell you how to take this to the next, next line, listen carefully, okay? This is the way you have to learn programming, okay? So now see here, here I have displayed, right? Now I want to display it in the next line, so what you do to display that in the next line? Same thing. I will, I will move. I will move. New line character, that is zero A H, okay? Then I will display that character by putting zero two into the. Then interrupt twenty-one H. Now similarly. I will go to the next line. DL comma zero DH. Okay, enter character, enter next line. Now carriage return, it's called carriage return, okay? Move H comma zero two, interrupt twenty-one H. Okay, so these two will take care that your four will be displayed in the. Next number of vowels will be displayed on the next line. That's all. Okay, so now let us save and compile. So now what I will do, I will try to run this program, okay? Hmm, I will try to run this program. I will not go single step, see now here, see uh. I will write waits. Out. Okay, now how many vowels are there in this? Tell me. I will put one more now, yes. How many vowels are there? Can you count?
Four.
One, two, three, four, right? So I will write is, now five you write? Yes or no? Right, now see. It has to display that value, see. Can you see five is displayed here after execution? Can you see five is displayed in the next line? How it has gone to next line? It has gone to next line because of these statements. These two state, uh these statements. Okay, then it will display that ASCII value. See now, can you see this? It is displayed in the next line. You can use other interrupts, you can see that this five will be displayed in the center of the screen. You can take this to center of the screen, you can set the cursor, this interrupt twenty-one is very interesting. You can do anything in this. Right, you can set this five in the center of the screen, you have done this. You can display five in the center of the screen, that also you can do. This type of programs will be asked in the examination. Right, it's not difficult provided you practice this. Okay, students. This is the way you have to practice, so I will just put this program. On the, on the WhatsApp group. So that. You just know or else I will just, yeah, I'll put it in the WhatsApp group, okay? L two. Micro. Twenty twenty-five, L two, L five, okay? See here, entire program I have put here, okay? And then put it for L five. Micro. L. Five. Okay, I have supposed to have one more meeting, I have overshoot it. Okay, fine, okay? Is it okay? So. Okay, we will stop today. I have, I have explained you. One very good program. See, I was able to do only one program, just check actually, you know, uh. How much it might take to explain all the programs? Right? So I, I expect you that you will. You will do, you will practice the programs. Okay, so we will stop today. Next session, we will do one more program, summer programs. Okay, I have another meeting now, I am just logging out, okay? Yeah, I will stop recording first.
Sir.
Huh?
Can you give another program to practice on, on our own?
Uh another program, okay, I will, I will put it in the WhatsApp group, okay?
Okay, sir.
Yeah.